Everyone had a chance to look at minutes from our previous meeting? Any corrections or additions on that? If not, we'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, tonight's agenda, if anyone's got any correction, I think we gotta move Dave down to old business again, so you guys know. And then, uh, we'll cross Harry off for visitors, but we'll bring it up for new business. Anything else? Anything else we need corrections on or additions? Okay, take a motion to approve tonight's agenda then?
Um, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go read to Jamie and Eric.
Okay, um, we just wanted to start by, we got insurance, we've been doing quite a few updates, you know, with all the part board additions. I got copies, do you guys wanna see it or share one, or do you want your own?
I'll take it.
I think I've seen it all.
Yeah, I think it was discussed at the last meeting potentially, but we did just get in the renewals also for November that are coming up. So I have copies of those too. So through us, there's four separate policies, there's the scheduled building policies, the auto policies, the inland marine, which would be the machinery type policies, and then the general liability policy. So the renewals that are coming up in November, the inland marine, the premiums did go up twenty-seven dollars from last year, but that's because we added that tar machine just recently, so really no big change there. The general liability, it did go up a hundred dollars from last year. The main reason for that is because of the extra exposure with the extra building and different things, the improvements that the part board has done. And then the business add-on, there's no change there, so all that premium's gonna be the same from last year to October. So you guys can take a look at that. And I know when we took over the policies, we met and we went through everything pretty thoroughly, we took fixtures, measurements, updated everything to where it should be from what it was. So it's definitely changed since we've taken over. Do you guys have any questions specifically regarding the insurance?
That new system we put in for the water tower?
I don't think we put it on yet.
Okay, what we did is we put a new system in. Prior, we were checking for sensing the pressure down at the blue tank.
Okay.
And now we're actually sensing the pressure up here at the tower. And then it's gonna through the cellphone, it communicates.
Okay.
So Bill could actually see it on his phone.
Okay.
What about the consti number? I don't remember.
I just looked into that.
If you could get us like the details of it, you know, what it's called, if there's serial numbers associated with it. We should chase the pictures of it too, now we make sure that we get that.
The one boxes up here is going to take pictures of that.
Yeah, we could do that. And then I guess going forward, any changes, you know, that the part board does or you guys do? What's the best way to get that information to us, or who's ultimately responsible to get us that information? Or how do we, how do we do that? Because we don't wanna miss anything.
That's a good question.
They just put that in here last, last week, so this is new that just got put in. It's been sitting here done.
Okay.
It's new since we did all the dugouts and all that stuff.
Okay, okay.
So, and the tar machine was pretty new too, so we're trying.
As far as the part, their updates and everything, I would say we can just have Beth there, Nicole will get ahold of you guys. Would be the best. Other than that, I agree, one of us could get ahold of you as far as city services.
And I don't know if you guys wanna review the machinery list, you know, every year when we sign it out, just to make sure that things are still where they should be. Yep, so this one. So for the autos, we just have a couple of autos and they're all liability only. There's a ninety-seven Ford, the garbage truck, and then ninety-two dump truck on the Sherry. So that one we have for the autos.
Is this a bill too?
No, she's not. This is the machinery. And that would be the tractor going over there, and those types of things, this is the oil more.
I just gave Bill. Yeah, but I'll put this in my, will it come in my folder?
I think she does have a folder for you, so why don't I keep, I'll keep that for you. Yep, she'll have a folder and then she'll have the invoices for you. Yeah, then we can.
We figured about twelve, it's roughly what that's been all caused.
Okay. Yeah, just the water tower?
What is it called? A board mother or some kind of?
Can't mention the name of that.
Yeah, so if you guys wanna just review this, I know we went through it pretty good a few years ago, but it's always nice to take a look again and make sure we haven't missed anything as time comes on. But I guess we feel pretty comfortable with, you know, knowing what we know, where the policies are at, that everything's insured, where it should be. It's just those things that get added from time to time that we might not know about right away as well.
Okay. As far as I know, there's no purchases, big purchases in the future at least, should be okay.
We don't have to, no, sure, water figures are allowed, but there's just big purchases.
No, because if one goes out, it's not even covered anymore.
Right.
That's true. Anything else for us? Okay, anything else for us? Do we have anything, or you guys are good?
No, we're good. I have, I showed up the invoices and then the new IDs for November, so I can just leave those here. But if you wanna just review those, give us anything that we might miss.
What about the water tower, is that on there?
The water tower? With that lander and marine? Yeah, we got this thing. City Hall shop heater panels. We did right here, hundred thousand dollar water gallon water tank, no, that's outside of town. The water tower itself, it doesn't look like, unless we included it in here. I bet it's, yep, fifty thousand gallon water tower. So for this building, we got the business property, two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, the personal property, which would be the desks, the chairs, the stuff like that, thirty-one thousand, and then I'm assuming this four-hundred-and-six thousand is the water tower, probably?
Could be, and that wouldn't even cover half of it.
Well, that's where, that's where it's at, I don't know what a water tower costs.
We're in the millions.
Well, that'll get you a good start.
Just the painted is what, over a hundred thousand?
So if you wanna change that too, I mean, really adding is not going to increase the premium significantly, the premiums are still reasonable.
Because those changes that we just made, adding the, the new part, like the warming house and all the stuff that we added there, the snack shack and the dugouts, that was well over a hundred thousand dollars, and changes and it increased the premium a hundred more dollars, yeah, for the year.
Maybe we should have, try and get us some numbers for putting a bigger price tag on that water tower, that's probably still thirty years ago, I don't know.
Yeah, if you guys can figure out, you know, what it actually costs to replace it.
Yeah, we better, because that would be bad.
Definitely be worth a little extra premium to have that. So, but yeah, take a look at all those numbers, if you want us to quote anything else, just let us know, pretty easy to do.
Yeah, because even emergency tract, if they would pay sixty, forty, we're still uncovered.
Forty, that's what, close to two million?
We got a tower.
They're saying around fifty thousand, like what we got, just over a million dollars?
Yeah, so we should definitely look at that then. Give us our number for that as well.
Not gonna be a super, so.
Great. That new water, the new system, do you wanna just take a picture of it and send it to us?
I can do it.
Or either tomorrow or Thursday, I could stop by two and do it too, whatever's easier.
Yeah, why don't we do it tomorrow, what time are you?
I'll be here all day.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay, thanks for talking.
Thank you guys.
These bills for me?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is for?
Nigel, is that me?
Sorry, sorry, tell her.
What do you got for us?
We paid this for a year. Very simple, essentially, just, just into second avenue, go east down that way, and the pond would, moving in from that one, one of the basement walls had a, very badly in the inward, and was at risk, so, or would like a permit to sit, including, do a couple of that, and right, eight, in front of the leaning wall, reinforce it with concrete, essentially. You make a new double structure, I'm sure that would, that'd stop the problem.
So you're just asking for permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, basement's got two walls that are leaning in, we're just gonna concrete to hold them back up, slowly try to push them back out.
Do you have a dollar amount approximately?
Nah, I've wrapped up my head now.
You're gonna do it yourself, or?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I moved to approve a permit for.
I don't see a problem, yeah. Second? All in favor?
Aye. Like the cost is, you wanna come over, Sherry?
He, he knows what it is, he has it on his.
For supply?
I'm thinking he's got the fifty dollar one, right?
No, no, for supply, so, oh, far, whereas we've only gone like, what, nine hundred something?
About a hundred something.
Yeah, so you can go up to two thousand before it goes from a ten dollar to a fifty dollar one?
I'm okay with the ten dollar one, that's fine.
So you're aware of it, you don't.
Because they're gonna do the work themselves. Now, Nigel, remember your other question was about the water?
Oh, oh yeah, didn't? So one of the, so the way they set up the house, one of the account waters coming in from the, one of the Boeing walls, so we, we'd like to have someone come in and just turn it so we can build around that.
Oh, okay, you're talking main water meter?
Yeah.
Have you seen it, or is it something?
I'd have to look at what kind of their plan is in order to mute it, what kind of.
Are you just gonna build a wall against that existing wall?
Yes, sir.
So you want it, right now it's running with the wall, right?
Right, yeah, and then it's going up, we're gonna, we wanna just turn it, build a, basically a hand pipe around it, and then just have the new pipe coming up to the ceiling.
After the meter you're talking?
Yeah. Nothing should have to be taken out.
Huh?
Nothing should have to be taken out.
Okay, so you just want that meter turned?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's probably no big deal. Did we put new parts on that? No, we didn't. So we might have to put, to turn it, we might have to put no parts on there?
Yeah, that's no problem, we can help you with that.
Yeah, I would see if people, I mean, as long as you guys, any cost that's incurred for parts and all that, I guess, because we're only responsible up to the curb stop itself.
Yeah.
From there on, it's yours, but, I mean, to have them help you do that in something simple, I don't see whether there'd be a problem with that at all.
No.
And if it's just a simple L V, that's fine.
Depending on how a day is made, I have to cut everything off and put one of them compression fittings on, you know, and then turn the ninety straight out instead of with the wall. Depending on how it's set up, I don't know, I don't remember. Couldn't you put a new ball belt on there? So we might be able to get it turned over without having to put more.
Awesome, I do know I got a little bit of plumbing I gotta do after the meter, but that's not gonna cost anything.
Okay, no, that's fine. Yeah, we can build and stuff down.
When do you want it moved, or?
Probably next week.
Next week, okay.
Yeah.
Any specific day or don't matter?
Uh, not quite sure yet, sorry. And I'm drawing, are you doing interviews today right now?
Yep, okay.
You stand by most of that.
You can write in for it. After the main construction.
Do one of you guys have a cellphone, he could call you, or you call him, like, set up?
It's five oh three, five oh five.
I'll just give him your number.
So you're looking for a job?
Yes, sir.
The post office in Jamestown's hiring right now.
Uh, my background's in construction and fabrication, I don't know how well to do in a post office situation.
JD Construction, working on that house right up there across from school, he's looking for somebody. We stopped and talked to him, windowing the roof.
Uh, I'll do it one night, someone's in, huh?
Yeah, I know he's looking for somebody right now. And he thinks it'll work probably tomorrow.
Anything else, guys?
I don't know, it should cut it all. Yeah, I think that's pretty.
Yeah, thanks for stopping in.
Thank you guys.
Oh, I'm gonna get my clipboard before you go though.
And I will be back with the fee.
Put it in an envelope and stick it right in that door if I'm not here.
Okay.
Moving on, Bill, what do you got for us?
Okay, Allied, Allied dumpster, dumpster is shot, bottom's loaded, fall out of it. I mean, we have a few more in town, but, um, the senior said they want the dumpster, and he said they would pay for the slab.
Okay.
So, that'd be just a yard and a half dumpster, smallest one they got.
Did we use all those ones we ordered before?
Yeah.
We did, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, shit.
So it's something we gotta get to get for, if we're going, we might as well pick up three of them right away, if we're going, or just pick up the two.
Mm-hmm, like the yard and a half, or what, eight hundred dollars?
Yeah, they wanna get a price quote on that website.
Something, I think we would follow.
You know, one of the problems with those dumpsters, they're all sitting, most of them are sitting on wet, most on wet, you know, earth, during the, you know, fall, winter, spring, and that's what's, you know, rusting the bottoms out of them things. They were all sitting on slabs, they'd probably last a whole lot longer.
We should maybe ask Allied then, I know we had talked about that before, doing slabs, maybe see if they'd be okay with, if we got a new dumpster, small, I don't know, it wouldn't take that big of a slab, four inches thick it would be.
Because I mean, you know, the city's buying these dumpsters and they're, you know, somewhat expensive, and, you know, it's a lot cheaper to pour a little four foot six foot slab for them than, you know, city go with their dumpster that way we do.
When I talked to Rick, he said it's also good, you might wanna talk to him, if you take the wheels off of them.
Then they'll sit right on the ground.
If you take the wheels off, we can't move them around here. They're high up to, back to garbage truck.
Oh, there you go.
Probably went to school.
And then they're hard to, if we have to move them a little bit to, to jockey on there, kind of a pain to.
Because the larger ones do not have wheels, right? They don't come with wheels. Only, what, three yarders more, or two yarders?
No, I think, what do we, what's up that, the school?
They have wheels, they don't anymore, but those are four, three yarders, I think, three yarders.
What's going on with the car?
That's a four yard, three yard.
That's four, that's a four yard, well, they have wheels on them.
Right.
What's Allied?
The new ones got wheels?
Everything but the biggest one, they, they have a six yarders or whatever they are.
Oh.
What do we get the last one of those three, what were those three? They were, there was two smaller ones and a bigger one, wasn't there?
Yeah, we got, the big one went out to county shop.
Okay, that's right.
No, there was two big ones. The one went to the county shop, the other one.
They both, they both all have wheels? Well, I'd let Allied know again, if they wanted to see if they can horse a slab to set it on, just.
And I can talk to them, if they want a bigger one than a yard and a half too.
Most time you dumping it all here is a full, or not?
Pretty close, I mean, most of you.
Allies, yeah, sometimes they have stuff on the ground.
I'm sure it can't come easily, you know, okay.
But yeah, the thing with the slabs, and especially in the wintertime, you know, everything's freezing on us, and the, and the ground, you know, and we're just ripping them apart, when we start lifting them up, when they're frozen to the ground, and that's where the hook is, starts crushing and bending and.
Yeah, we don't want that, we're spending all this money on them, so. Okay.
Um, moving on to city hall here, Tom and I, we went up and sealed the roof here, on that back part where the tower's at, comes through the building, was leaking pretty bad. So we went up and sealed that, and Tom sealed the valley up here, or actually it's over there.
And all these vents up here?
The vents, um, after looking, looking at all, we're, we're in the channel, we'll lift that next year, they're getting pretty bad. But I got Tom and Terry getting us an estimate to do it, I'm sure it'll be a little bit higher than what it is now, but, so maybe, if they could do it, we could help them out, rip them off, or, you know, whatever we gotta do that'll.
Yeah, we can do a lot of labor stuff, you know, rip all the shingles off, we can put the paper down, and just get it ready, they can come and just slap the shingles on.
I wonder how would steel be?
I was just gonna ask that.
Well, we could do steel too.
It's a little more expensive, but.
Maybe ask him for a quote for both, and they would?
It's, you know, I know it's a little more when I work with them, it, it's not a big difference, but there is, it's a little more expensive.
Okay, and maybe it'd be worth it though?
Yeah, it is, right.
Less labor though, I think.
Lot less labor, it's a lot, goes a lot quicker.
And then, you don't have to do it every ten years, or whatever.
I'll, I'll call them tomorrow and ask, see if they got it.
Is this rough, pretty flat, I don't even remember, or is there a pretty good slope to it?
It's, it's.
It wasn't that bad, yeah, then we're good, okay.
So now I'm doing eighteen H quoting, they came and, uh, cleaning the tower. After talking to them, he said it's gonna have to get resealed on the inside, and it's completely sandblasting the inside. Um, he hasn't sent out the pictures yet, but he said it's pretty bad, I talked to him today.
We said there's a few spots that are bad, like not the entire inside of the thing, but spots that are bad are pretty bad.
So nothing has walked it through yet, but.
Boy, we just did that one too long, maybe it is longer than I think.
Oh, what did he say, it was like ten years ago?
No, I thought it was longer than that, I thought it was like twenty years or something.
Oh, that's right, it was, that was ten years ago when he came out.
What did we do that time on the inside, we had a bunch of work done on the inside, that's been probably ten years old.
Where do you put the riser pipe in?
I thought we did a bunch of work in the paintings. But what did he, he did something else besides like, what else? Must be gone. Well, they painted it, they repainted it, didn't they?
Yeah, they put the riser pipe in and painted it.
And then repainted the tower. I don't know if they did any inspecting or not. Well, the tower we painted a few years after that, I know we did something, maybe it was the riser I was thinking of, I thought we did the whole inside of the tower, but obviously it doesn't matter.
Yeah, God, I just, I thought it was just the riser was by itself. And I'll be wrong, he gets his estimate then?
Yeah, he's gonna send out a contract, um, it's not cheap, it's gonna be ninety-five thousand a month.
Ninety-five thousand?
He said it might not need it for two years, it might be four years, might be six. He said, but it's gonna happen anytime.
He's gonna send out pictures and a contract, so I don't know if I wanna get an estimate from somebody else.
We're gonna have to, I thought, I thought going to.
Then I wonder, once we have pictures, I wonder if we try for C D B G money? You know, the community development block, man, through the south central. I know they changed their procedures on how they do things, so I'm not sure, but.
Wouldn't hurt to ask, we could.
He said that there are some deals where you can try and get some money for stuff like that.
Get me those pictures, and I'll send them to Tom with the money right away, and see what he can find for us, that's what we pay him for. Okay, maybe not raise that insurance, and old mother nature takes something.
Could have done with it too.
Let everybody know. Case I told him to also give us the, Warren and I talked about, talked with Tim, what, two, three years ago, about that riser pipe? Some of the paint is peeling off.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't look like it's getting any worse, so I told him just to send out an estimate, repaint it, that would be sandblasting that riser pipe, the outside one, repainting that too.
Does it look like that first piece job, there's spots where the, if you look and you see it, where the primer didn't bond or some damn thing?
Didn't they come out and repaint the leg, or one leg or something, because the paint was peeling?
They came out once after they painted it and did some bunch of touch-up stuff.
Yeah, there was something going on there, I remember that.
He said when they did, when they painted the water tower, they didn't, uh, sandblast the riser pipe, that's why it's coming out. They just went over it with primer and paint. Because if you look hard at it, there's orange, or was it orange, orange paint in behind it or something? He said that's the old primer that's coming out.
And now we know.
Um, meters are going in pretty good, got forty, two of them in, Tom's gonna help me with that. Um, there's probably what, here forty, that's all left out here yet, we gotta get installed. Had to order two meters that go in the pit, even what they are, they're completely sealed, and also no moisture, nothing can get into them, so.
Where are those for?
Ones for Stella's and the ones for?
Sheriff's.
Sheriff, shooting our spawn.
Oh.
If you got water that goes up in the line.
Oh, shit, okay.
We put a new cable on garbage truck that was getting pretty bad, that was bad.
If you're red in dumpsters and that, I see why.
It was down, there's a, there's a solid steel cable through the center of that, and that's all that was there, and everything else, it just.
And you can't see that part because it's up on the truck, so you never crawl up there, reset it recently, you know, something going on, but. Um, sweeping, sweeping controls, they're done, just them works pretty good, just still gotta contact them, Warren, about that drop in pressure, and then pumps kick on. See, right now we got it set at a hundred and ten feet is a cutoff point, and then it started at seventy feet, because when the pumps kick on, for some reason, I looked at the end today, it's, for whatever you want, it gets to that ninety foot mark, the pressure, I don't, I don't think it actually drops in town, I think it's just out here, or out there, or somewhere. It drops down to seventy, and then that's when the pumps kick on. And it's a pretty significant drop, I shouldn't say pressure in feet, I guess, it's more in feet than it is pressure.
Did you adjust, or did you talk to them, since we measured, built, did they physically measure the tower, the water level?
Let's hope something else isn't around it.
See, today it didn't do it. I know we had a little bit of an issue with the meter, and Sherry and I just figured it out here. Had to send me the meter for their shop, for their garage, they have a good shop there. At some point down the road, back in twenty twenty, a zero got added to the end of the number. So Sherry, Lydia's got it wrote down, um, the meter readings is seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred gallons. But that's not right, Tom and I went inside the building and read the meter, and the meter is only showing seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred. That's not right. Tom and I went inside the building and read the meter and the meter is only showing seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred, seventy-seven gallons. So at some point, there was another zero added when there should have been a zero added. So the meter's been being not read correct since twenty twenty.
And the meter's reading right, cause today I was filling three gallon buckets as he was watching the meter. And when I showed it off, he said that was exactly three gallons, three gallons.
See, the problem is when you got them, it used to be some of these black dots, you only had one zero to it. Then another phase came through and you had two zeros. Then you didn't know which, you know, I don't know. We had to go and look at a lot of basements to try to figure out what's one and what's two.
We were blowing seven hundred thousand gallons with the water, do we? We haven't been charging.
But she's been talking about it since what? I got texts since May, April maybe that it's not right, something's not right. But all them other times, she's never said anything, so I don't know.
So they've been paying for more water than they actually have been using.
Right.
She said it's using way more than their house does.
But she's been saying that for quite a few months, but we never, again, we never gotta pick it out until it's.
Well, we'll get together and see what the, what to do on that, I guess, Pat and Sandy.
How much more about?
What's this gonna say?
Huh?
How much more have they been charged?
Ah, I'm gonna tell you right offhand, usually their bill should have been seventy-seven dollars and fifty cent, like through the winter months. And when they don't use any water, and I think it was like a hundred dollars when they got charged.
So we're gonna talk a tremendous amount though?
No, we're not talking a tremendous amount. So it may have been anywhere from twenty-five to thirty dollars more a month. But not all months, some of them we saw there was zeros, zeros, so we don't understand.
Yeah, cause they only have the guy staying there so many.
Yeah, Bill and I were looking for the meeting here and there were some months it was zero, there was some months it was nothing.
Yeah.
So we don't know how all of a sudden.
The guy that's staying there, he's their trucker, so he's obviously.
Quite a bit.
But it's, it may be thirty dollars a month, some months, not, it's not gonna be astronomical.
Well, we gotta get him.
You know.
Do something to make it right.
I don't know if we should really, if they'd be willing to just move ahead from here. For one, you know, we redid that drainage system and it, it's a gray area who it really belongs to, but. You know, he paid the first time and we paid the second time and we never, the city never did take any.
Yeah, we see.
She just wants to figure out why the building uses water, nobody's there. They were shutting the toilet off and everything so that no, so it couldn't be the toilet and. We were at the point, we were gonna maybe have a plumber come in because couldn't figure it out and then all of a sudden. When he went down that basement, read that today, he says, we might have an extra zero on this one. But it didn't really big a lot of it all throughout the year, I mean, there's times it was zero used, so I don't know.
Should I, should I just tell Steve?
Yeah, I wanted someone to talk to him also if he wanted to do what's.
Let's just kinda look and see, well, you know it's how many gallons more is by looking at that. Seven hundred thou, so and then how about by the thousands?
Two hundred or six hundred and ninety some thousand gallons. Seven, six, eight, seven.
But when that zero got added, so there must have been one tremendously big bill.
Yeah. I mean, if you take, Bill, this was July's reading, I guess, that big reading was in July. And when they were written, when they read it today.
Shows only an extra, it shows a hundred, a hundred gallons used.
Uh.
But we would have made that a ten thousand because we would have added the extra zero on it. See, if any of those black dots, you either gotta add an extra zero or two zeros to make it, how does that work, Bill?
What I'm getting at is if, if it's that was actual back in twenty, you said?
I got the date with their eight fifteen.
Of twenty, so if that zero got added.
That's when the zero got added.
If that zero got added, then the previous without the zero, boy, they would have had a slopper of a bill.
Right.
Because they'd have went from, let's say they would have used physically a thousand gallons, it would have been seventy-seven, seven, seven, seven. And the next month, it would have been seven, seven. Seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy. So that month would have been a tremendous.
Sixty thousand.
And then it would have leveled off actually.
But you know, we were probably back then because we didn't know what it was, we would have not put them down. If it would have showed that amount, we would have put them at zero and watched the meter to see if it changed. So she probably didn't get that big amount. So that's what we got lost back.
We had trouble too with that beef burning everything, I suppose, it was all just coming together.
See, uh, see, and he knew Bill, there was.
Remember we were losing water and he couldn't figure out, that's probably another, we were probably chasing that back then, you know?
I'll talk to Pat.
Yeah, see what they wanna do and what we, it was roughly thirty dollars a month, how they wanna handle that, so.
I did talk to him yesterday about that dirt down there, our CD.
Anything else, Bill?
Nope.
Okay.
Um, as long as we, meters, cause now you said we had, we have about eighty meters, eighty-five. You know, you, so you put some in and there's what, forty back here, you had it roughly. Could we afford to buy, say, another fifty?
Um, we're waiting to see what the bill comes into these last fifty. But um, I don't know, we better see what was going on with the water tower, cause that's about, gonna be about forty-six thousand dollars.
With what?
The one, well, let's, we probably should see, cause someone's gonna have to come out of, not from that fund. We're gonna see what we have left after the bills are paid for these fifty meters.
Roughly sixteen thousand is what it's gonna cost us for these last fifty meters.
So we had twenty in the account. So if you take sixteen from that, we got four left, well, you just got fifty for sixteen, so we're gonna leave. And if you only had, if you got eighty count these, we need two hundred, over two hundred of them.
And so if there's four thousand left in there, I could order another dozen, I mean, just with the money that's.
Right, right. And then.
But when you were, when you come back from the auditor over in Napoleon, you said something about those, some, the infrastructure money was in an account?
Um, but that, it's an account, right, when you see this, like, let's say this month, if you looked at our, our um. Bank, a bank statement, shows we have like a hundred and forty-six thousand in that account, but you gotta remember, inside that computer, it shows. Infrastructure has this, this has this, this has this, so our CDs and all, this is all got an account for. What is our infrastructure fee for? It's not for meters, we can't use it for meters. What did we collect that infrastructure for, sewer or whatever we needed it?
That was, if I remember right, when we put it on, that was for the general fund.
Okay, so then we could.
Whatever we designate we need it, that's where we use it.
Then we could do it out of the infrastructure, cause that showed a hundred and something thousand there.
Just the infrastructure account was a hundred and some thousand, huh?
So that's sitting in a savings account at the bank. And the emergency fund will go down because we're gonna use that as part of our snow rule from last year, so we can take. Cause in order to do the budget, you can't have but so much in each account, like emergency, airport.
So what do we, I think personally, my opinion would be to order another dozen and then wait to see what this water tower does for now.
So it's good to say, cause if we're looking at ninety-five dollars in that water tower.
Then we're sitting pretty broke.
We better, we better concentrate on that first.
See what he says, cause those meters, we could still buy it and install it correctly and install it inside.
They can stall with price.
Yeah, they're all, other than those two, they're all inside.
I, that's my opinion, but I guess.
We are, I mean, yeah, I agree with you.
And with the list that, list he has from the fifty he just got, that's gonna take care of everybody that's hard to get to in the winter. So you have most of your, that's your problem.
I mean, it's not emergency, but you know, we've been messing with it for how many years and.
Yeah, yeah. If we wouldn't have that water.
We have a system, I guess, you know, when we started, I think we were figuring. Whatever that grant was, we were figuring that whole amount for meters, well, then we had to use some for the program and. So that bit into it and at that time it was two hundred bucks, now they're three hundred and something apiece. So they're not coming down.
Yeah, because it, it wasn't just meters we had to buy, we had to get the whole new software for our computer. We had to move from a small, um, to a small business account instead of the one we were on. Now it's a small business, well, now you got training, you got to charge your fees.
I say we just table that until next meeting when everyone's here and then maybe we'll get back with that.
Yeah.
Hope it doesn't go up another fifty dollars each by then. Okay.
We'll have the, the brass from the old meters too. Taking old meters apart and throwing brass in the barrel out here, so.
Okay.
And then the other thing, I think I'll talk to Tracy Redlin. See if there's any possibility of getting, you know, it wouldn't be hundred percent, but some for that tower.
Yeah.
Bill's talking about that brass, it's all scrap brass, but we're saving it and I mean, we got some, some weight there. Eventually, we're gonna take it up James Town, sell it to West Canada and then have them write a check off through the city.
Okay.
We're just watching the precious metal prices.
Yeah, okay.
Um, the bar meter is working right, it's working correctly. What's going on there, they're having a little, they're having backflow issues. So whatever is, I don't know what's causing it, I don't know. So I got Brett lined up to put a backflow running in there just after the meter. So hopefully that'll, that should take care of the back, you know, the reverse flow on it. With these new meters, I can go on their app and stuff like, you can tell their daily usage, everything. It'll tell you, yeah, if there's reverse flow on it, and it won't, it won't tell you how much, it'll just show you. It's got a minor flow or reverse flow on it, so that's kinda how I figure that out. And then we'll have to pull one in at the fire hall too, and I got him lined up for them too.
And the ally gas pump?
I gotta get allies in yet, that was the other thing, that's a three inch.
Cause I see we had, we said it a while ago, weren't we?
Yeah. I'll get, I'll get one coming.
Okay. It was just the businesses for now, okay? Or did I wrong that? Okay, for the back, okay. Yeah, that'll be the next thing, we'll get these meters done, finally, we'll have to put those in all residential too, I suppose.
Yeah, they're pushing for it.
Okay, you're good then, Bill?
Yeah.
Thanks. Uh, auditor?
Um, I guess I really don't have anything. Um, I got two here for Bill to shut off tomorrow.
I kinda looked at that, I don't know if you guys looked at the water stuff.
Well, the two we have shut off totally right now, that didn't shut off for quite a while, is Sarah Ward's house and Tyler's home house. Okay, um, Lax just paid theirs, so they're good, so it's the other two, Bury and Beer. They gotta be shut off tomorrow.
Okay.
Bury and Beer, Misty, Merton, or John Bury. I checked this morning, there's no payments there, so they gotta go shut off.
Okay, now we gotta stay on.
Mm-hmm.
Probably need to get a hold of.
And then he just gave you the phone number to tell us the moment, we haven't had anything.
I would just say both, just that and there, just in case.
I gave you that, I tried to give you those, you could have one hand if they wanna pay you. I gave you those, so you have it on hand if they wanna pay, but then that doesn't have an eighty dollar refund, well, if you don't turn it off, they don't need it.
Well, once we show up, it's, right? Isn't that how it worked? Once we showed up at the house, it was, was automatic shut off and then to turn it back on, we need eighty dollars to do it.
Eighty dollars more.
Okay, yeah, just get ahold of Cal for both of them and be done with it, so you don't have any headaches.
Now seeing, Ron, just get, Ron just gave me the number for, the phone number for that Tyler Simone, for the house over here. Cause I was telling him, he's from Medina, maybe checked over in that area, so he got his phone number. But what he say, he hasn't talked to Terry in two years, he can't get ahold of her. So that.
I do believe that though.
That house sits with the water off as well, so I don't know where to even send the bill to. And Sarah Ward's, there was some action of their last Friday and I, so theirs keep coming back too. They never got anything at the post office, uh, post office box. So they had never received a bill, there was just, everything comes back, it turns, turn to sender.
Well, so she's in James Town, the actual owner of the house.
So I did go over there, there was people taking the refrigerator in, so I did go over and give them a recent bill, that's eight hundred and eighty dollars. They haven't paid one bill since they've been here, they paid the eighty dollar deposit and never anything else.
Did they have power?
She has power now, yeah.
I figured if I took it over there, she's going to go get help getting it paid, she's gonna need to have a bill. But where do I get the bill to? There's never, there was never anybody there. So I did give her.
So they must have put the power company, let it put it in someone else's, in her name, the other lady's name then?
I'm assuming, yeah. But that, that bill includes like six hundred dollars of price cutting too, right?
Oh, not that much, no, it was one fifty and one fifty, I think.
It was.
You did it three times.
Three times, once was three hundred, you did it twice for one fifty, cause I did both of them and it was like.
No, no, it's gotta, I, I don't think it was that, I.
Well, we changed it for one fifty a lot or something, or a house or something.
Yeah, cause that's two houses and they're big yards and that grass was this tall.
I remember we agreed on that.
Yeah, I was out there for, I was ordering a house.
And when do you turn it over for tax?
November. Theirs will, theirs will and so will Tyler's will both go over to for taxes.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Joe's not here for water sewer policing, Jeff Hyde's not, Larry, do you have anything?
Nope.
Lauren?
Nope.
Okay, moved to old business, um, park board tree project that we went over, that's going real good.
Oh, did, oh, okay, oh, and then we came back to it, yeah, I should tell you how much it is, we got it.
Okay, uh, liquor license or permit for gackled days. That's done. Building permit for Jill Kelly, Susan Lund, remodel, tow cottage, garage, clunts, Rusty Freeman windows, Lori Lang fence. Water supply control update, I think that you and Bill, Lauren and Bill have filled us in pretty good on that, good there. The ordinance update, Lauren and I are working on that. Um, and then Dave Ravinius would like to know if we decided on a city bill and after. The council, I voted on that and I talked to the councilman again and whatever he's at doing now, they, that's what we're gonna keep it at. As far as his water sewer, garbage or however, whatever he's getting charged for.
Okay.
And I think, did you say that was like nine months or six or whatever?
He turns it on, he turns it on, like, May, April.
Depending on the weather.
And then he turns it back off in September, October, September, October.
That first night that it, you know, maybe it's in the forecast for a freeze, he wants it off that day.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, he's getting charged accordingly, it's not like it's getting charged every.
Right.
Okay, so that, um, move on from that. New business, uh, the cemetery board.
But what is going on there?
Okay, Harry was, Harry wanted, everybody's dying off or can't be on the board anymore. So he, he wants to only stay on one more year, so he was thinking of maybe giving the cemetery board back to the city. Now, um, he's gonna. Now, um, he's gonna stay on one more year. Slaver of Indians just went on, Truman's on, now Anthony and Lydia Schlecht are willing to go on. So they're getting herself a young board so that they can stay back on and Harry can help them out, get them, keep them started. And then they also have, I think Anthony and Lydia were gonna take over mowing, so that way they could keep the board.
Were you here when they approached us about the city taking over for the cemetery?
Yeah.
So we're trying to avoid that, so we can get people onto that board and they're doing a good job of getting.
And you know, and you still have Patty doing the books, well, if, if it comes through where she doesn't do them. If you get these young guys on here that can be on here for a long time, you know, one of them can step up.
Yeah, who's doing the books?
Patty, I'll hurt some forever.
Oh.
And you said something, the city would take over it, then they wouldn't get that money each year, that, um, mill or whatever it is, right?
Right, well, this year they're going to get mills for there. Cemetery.
Yeah, I think.
Cemetery, never, never, nobody ever put in for mills for there and they could have.
But I think they would get it, they'd still get it, but it'd come through the city, which like.
Well, everybody's comes through, well, no, no, they don't. Air, I, we don't see anything for the park board, other than that, like the library comes to the city and so does the airport.
So we'll just stay in.
If you, yeah, and I think, and I was talking to Nathan, yeah, I was talking to Nathan Danny a little bit, I might have him talk to that that went on too. Well, then they have whole board. There's no sense they'd have to pull it over here.
Okay, well, good deal, we don't have to worry about it then. Okay, Eric and Jamie go over insurance that, we did. Approved trademark for city for next ten years, city pay half of bill.
Okay, the bill for the trademark is six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the park board's willing to pay half if we pay half and it's for ten years.
And that's that whole slogan deal?
Yeah, and I, I would say that he's got the thing on here and they can't, because they're, they're doing their own little special program or whatever to unveil this.
Okay, you guys have a problem with that, if I'll take a motion to approve three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
I move to approve.
Second. All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Last thing is raises for city employees, which we didn't do last year. I spoke with the councilman and I spoke with our employees, um, and got what we agreed upon. So if we could have a motion to approve, um, Tom got a three dollar raise. Uh, the others would get a two dollar raise, the other part time. Uh, Bill's salary would go up four hundred and eighty a month. And the auditor, Sherry's would go up five hundred a month, cause she's doing our audits, our, our city, what am I saying here? She's taking more audits, more hours per month, I'll just put it that way. We don't have that goofy son of a bitch doing our audits anymore, so. Um, so a motion to approve those.
Move to approve.
Second, Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
So you got Tim and Jimmy on that?
Yeah, they didn't get it to two dollars.
Two dollars?
Yeah. All right, uh, did you guys have a chance to look at approved bills? For the month?
You're current, maybe.
It's gonna be pretty redundant in minutes.
So is that which way you were going?
Pardon?
Just saying, I didn't know where you went.
Uh, any questions on that?
Well, I just kinda see, I'll move to approve motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, date and time of next meeting is October second.
For me.
At seven PM.
Okay, the next one there, you guys, we're gonna have to add it in a, uh, budget meeting. To approve any rises, the rises we're gonna do.
Before, or before our next meeting, like?
Nope, we can do it at that meeting because then they're doing that, right after that, the budget. I did the preliminary budget in already. So now we have, you have to really decide whether you wanna go, I, I maxed everything out.
The final.
So now I gotta do a final budget in, so I, the October second one is when we're gonna do a final reading. Of what, if we're gonna leave everything maxed or we're gonna keep or lower.
We can do that at our seven o'clock.
At our, at our seven, but we just have to, like we do when we're doing the tax equalization meeting, we have to close that one out, open this one. And I do, I do believe I, we have to invite the public, so I'm gonna have to put something in the paper, in case anybody wants to come in. You know, see how they feel.
Make sure you do that, so we're.
Yeah.
Okay, so October second at seven PM's the next meeting, um.
On the agenda here, that copy that you off the email, Zelmer Road could be grabbled?
Oh, Zelmer Road, I took it off the one now, um, he, he got it done last Friday.
Perfect. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, when we were up there, Tom and I were up there a couple times, even with the garbage truck, the road doesn't.
Broke, there was a couple little divots, right, as you're going up the slope off the black top.
Maybe talk to Troy, cause I know she has sent something.
Since, since Friday?
No, see, when I do, when I sent y'all the preliminary agenda, it was on there and then Bill, Bill told me that they got that done.
Okay.
So that's why you're seeing this printed off one without it. Cause it was something before I.
All right, take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, seven fifty-eight, city council adjourn.